Agenda? Well, I have to go on my job. Uh, would you welcome the room? Is that all in favor? I have a... Thank you. Um, the next item is to review the minutes of our June 15 meeting.
Just had one small change. It was in the discussion. Um, here it is. One page. On the last page, page six, it says Vice Chairman Smith, and can we make it Chairperson or just Vice Chair would be my preference? Vice Chair Smith, CFP, application is intentionally deficient of information. And I do recall saying it was deficient of information, but I do not recall stating it was intentional, nor do I know whether or not it was intentional. So I would like that stuff, please. And just got a request to change the chair.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, I believe I may stand corrected on the adoption of agenda on first page. I think Ms. Mead seconded. Um, and, uh, I think I should have more. The bottom page four, uh, it states, did you point out the existing entrance was grandfathered for residents? I believe she just stated that it was, um, that it was a residential entrance. I'm going to announce a... Top of page five, third line, Mr. Henry stated, instead of VACs there, there's no lone engineering. And that's it.
You got those? All right. Um, anybody else? If not, I welcome the motion to adoption. It says, move on.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
I will, well. I will say also because I was...
All right. Which brings me to the next item before we launch in. I'd like to, I know I welcomed you at our work session, but tonight we have our first regular meeting with our latest member, so I'd like to officially welcome, uh, Catherine Ishi representing the Piedmont District. Thank you for your willingness to serve and, um, we'll do that tonight. So ladies and gentlemen, there will be three opportunities to express yourselves this evening. The first, which I will open in a minute, is a general public comment period. Uh, if you're here to speak on either of the two, um, special exception, your zoning application, or for which we have a public hearing this evening, there will be separate public comment sessions for the Bellamy application and the Pleasant View application. So, uh, I'll first open the general public comment for those who would like to comment on anything other than those two applications. Uh, and as always, I would request that you identify yourself and your address or the district that you come from, and please try to keep your comments limited. And we do have a microphone this evening, so for the interest of having you here, you're in, you can take. We appreciate if you would use the, uh, the microphone. And, uh, again, I'd like to, people try to keep their comments focused to three minutes. I know none of us like when we start trying to use the timer off. Don't want to do that. We can keep things moving reasonably well without it, and so, uh, let's, uh, go ahead and I will open up the public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
You commented the elements from, please, Henry. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, while you were away, my application for my contractor's yard came up for a review, and I believe that it was incorrectly tabled and got forth by Ms. Smith. I think it was a misreading of what the code actually is. Uh, and I'd like to have it back on the agenda. Uh, we are waiting, uh, both myself and the county, uh, we're waiting on a legal opinion by the county attorney. Actually, he made that legal determination this afternoon by pushed the wrong button on an email. He sent the email, but not the attachment to it outright. So I'd like to see if we can read it back on.
Thank you. Uh, we will, I think by having tabled it, it is the project of the commission when you decided to take it off the table and put it back on in the agenda. Sir, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hey, Ron Knight, Jackson District. I want to make some comments on the completed plan update that you will be dealing with Stephen Aingley. Uh, I've tried to attend the work sessions and meetings that you had, and as a member of the board of supervisors, we had raised issues about this which were taken into account, and you did, uh, you know, decide to further look into how the plan was going to be updated. But having attended the meetings, what I've seen, which I have questions on, is that early on, uh, Ms. Smith made a comment about the fact that there were new statistics available through the Piedmont group that needed to be a part of that plan. But a plan, and our plan goes from one to eight, and it starts out with the beginning, and then there's statistical information, and then based on that statistical information, uh, basically, chapter six is sort of put together, and then from all of that information, then you go on to chapter seven, which is the plan, and then chapter eight is the implementation of the plan. But what I've seen is, uh, and particularly in, I'm not sure which meeting it was, whatever, but there were, you sort of handed out assignments to different people to take on the responsibility of certain chapters. But the way that has been carried out is not in a one-to-eight order in that, and this is no offense to Christine, in that they've been trying to put together the new statistical information, which is basically what you have to look at in order to put together six, seven, and eight. And looking on the thing tonight, I'm still seeing stuff that's from 2010 or whatever. So that statistical information still is not an integral part of the plan, and in order to move forward, you have to have that information. So I don't, and then in reading in the, in the paper is that you're about ready to wrap it up. I question how that can be, in that we have to have the current statistical information, study that, and then look at the next steps, and then put together a plan based on that statistical information. So I, I question whether the information that was presented in the paper last week or whatever, that it was, you know, you were pretty much finishing up, is in fact true in that you need to look at the statistics and then go through the logical order and put a plan together that's going to benefit us, and that is also, because I look at what is on in the information tonight, in that the implementation, the plan and the implementation are eight pages out of 100. That's the future of our county. So out of 100 pages, eight of it has to do with where we're going, and it really doesn't say anything more than it said 15 years ago. So I don't think we're there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Last call. If not, I will hereby close the general public comment period, and we can move on to the public hearing segment.
May I just say one thing, in a fair way? I don't really believe in that public comment isn't an appropriate time to engage thing, but I do think that it was misstated that I tabled, um, the application for Mr. Capiari last month. The application was indefinitely tabled unanimously by the commission, and I only wanted to clarify that clearly because you weren't here.
By all means, I believe that's clear in the minutes, so thank, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is special exception of 19501, the primary elementary school, uh, division, the, the special exception permit. Ms. Summers, would you like to tee this up?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Bellamy High School wishes to convert 36 Bellamy Lane from residential use to an educational use, parcel 26 pursuant to Roccohan County Code 170-36B and 170-63B. And Mrs. Hoffman and Mr. Bennett already have a special exception for the use of their property for a school and a day camp for parcel 25. In 2003, a special exception permit was granted to the applicants to start Bellamy School with a maximum of 45 students. They started grades six through nine in 2007, and 2012, the school expanded to include grades six through 12. The applicants are now proposing to utilize the property, join to the existing school, and convert a single-family home to accommodate the primary ages of three to six and elementary ages of six to 11. The commission reviewed this as a preliminary application at their May 15 meeting and requested additional information, which the applicants have submitted, and the applicants are pressed at this night.
Thank you. See, applicants, would you have anything to add before, in addition to the information I already provided?
I'm going to add a correction, I think. Uh, the house that we're trying to convert from residential to educational is actually on that same parcel. It's not a adjacent parcel, it's the same parcel. It is a little confusing because the original schoolhouse, parcel three quarters of an acre, was added to to create seven acres, which is the parcel of the school and that residential house.
Thank you. There may be additional questions about that. I agree with you that it's a little confusing in there. Thank you. With that, I will hereby open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak, uh, with respect to this, this application. Anyone else? No? Sure. Ms. Smith, go on.
I'll back open Jackson District again. These folks have been providing a valuable asset to our community for years, and they will expand on it. There's never been a problem, so let's do it.
Thank you.
Hereby, unless there's anyone else? Hereby close the public commentary and turn to our commissioners. Ms. Ishi, as I mentioned to you, is our custom to begin with representative of the district in which the applicant resides and offer the project of going first or last, and apologies for leading off with you at your first meeting. I will offer that to you, and you can decide where you'd like to, would you like to comment now or hold off till the end?
I appreciate that very much. Being the newcomer, I'll hold off till the end and allow those who have done this before to give their impressions first, although I have had the opportunity to go out and look at the property, so I can share that. But again, I'd love to hear the commissioners' response.
Perfect. Well, why don't we move down to Ms. Smith? This is also in your district, so you're in the department. Do you have thoughts or comments or questions?
I, um, I reviewed everything and also stopped by the property of the weekend. I very much appreciate you being available on mine. The only questions that remained for me pertain to, um, 170-63E items, the portions about the size of the schoolyards, and that seems to be dictated by the enrollment, the fenced schoolyards. Bear with me, I'll find it. Additional standards for primary schools, secondary, advanced schools, and technical schools. Um, in addition to the minimum lot size requirement, 200 square feet of usable outdoor recreation space shall be provided for each child in grades kindergarten through three, and the 430 square feet of outdoor useful recreation area shall be provided for child in grades four through 12. So that was my only question, is if, um, if we need a sort of breakout on the fenced area for the children to anticipate they refer to a contingency enrollment in proportion for the fenced area for recreation.
So, um, if you want to ask the question to, and I'm inclined to ask, because I understand this is part of the, it is a separate parcel, but the overall school operation is extended beyond this parcel, so I guess that maybe we should ask, how do you anticipate needing that requirement of requisite outdoor space?
Do we have a, put up a chain link fence on the east side of the house or the back side, roughly back side? I don't know the exact square footage of that. I had not calculated it, but knowing what the rights said, we guesstimated or estimated a much larger area than what it is. What was it?
It's, uh, 200 square feet for a child kindergarten through three.
Which is, which is 10 by 20. And, uh, for child, and we're...
There are two things here. The, um, since we're doing primary and elementary, daycare regs are very stringent, so we've done the play yard that's off of the primary space, but the whole rest of the farm is open to the, well, to everybody, but the, the one through six opens automatically to the rest of the farm, which is...
It seems like...
The seven acres, yes, but it's also 130 more acres. Well, and let's not misunderstand it under D2, it says all outdoor recreation areas shall be fully fenced.
Right, with the recreational area.
Correct.
For those that are fenced.
Correct. So I just would like the square footage accounted for so that it could be compared against the enrollment.
I don't have a calculator, but I'm figuring it out.
I understand. This is just a question that came up as I was reviewing the application. I don't expect an answer on the spot. And then the other question that came up, I did not see, I know we had not requested VDOT further approvals, but I believe we did have a request in our vote sheet for weigh-in from the health department on the water, and I did not see that process for dogs.
The health department commented, they had no objections to the subject system design capacity was sufficient. They did not comment on the water.
And that's for the current application?
Yes, ma'am.
But they didn't have a, just for the design was sufficient, but they...
The subject was sufficient, but as far as water, they did not comment on that.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you. Well, VDOT did approve.
Uh, yeah, I think we're talking, you said VDOT, but you, you...
VDOT was, I didn't understand that VDOT was required. I didn't understand that we were just looking for something from the health department.
Right. Your, your comment was, I think you might have said VDOT when you started, but she was ultimately referring to...
The department.
Department of Health. And Mr. Cole, if you would...
Well, I, uh, Lou Benick spoke a minute ago. He said they're on the same parcel. Can you just clarify that for me? I thought it was two parcels.
Well, the farm is two parcels. The original zoning was when we first bought the schoolhouse and requested educational use, we combined camp was camp slash school, so it became zoning for the whole 138 acres, more or less. Tax-wise, we have map 54 and tax, plots 24 and 25. 25 is the seven acres which the school and this residential house is on. Parcel 24 is the rest of the farm.
So it is on the same block as the current school?
It is.
Okay.
And they're contiguous with the farm and...
Surrounded by the farm?
No.
Not the, the...
Well, it's, yeah.
So the land water is a different...
And, uh, and to follow up on Ms. Smith's question about the well, I presume there's probably some water, you'll have to have just a standard water test at least to...
It's the same well as the school's on.
Same old school.
Yeah, same one. So it's been in use for all the years the school's been there.
Ma'am? Mr. Cole, ma'am. Open. How did you get that?
Um, years ago, I had a daycare center in Fall River County that was on the draw accepted, and I remember that, uh, the health department, we had to get a water test every month. Y'all have to do that?
No. Mention that it may, if the numbers grow, we might meet that threshold of the water part of the health department to require monthly tests. But at this, at the level of, uh, students we have now, we don't meet the minimum threshold.
What, what is your level now of students and where do you have to know?
Well, we've been granted permission for 45 students for campers for 24 years, I think. Um, our highest enrollment at the school, I think, was 24, 25, when we were giving lots of scholarships, trying to encourage people to send their children. When things got a little bit tighter and less scholarships were available, uh, we've been floating between 18 and 20. We hope to attract 20 more students.
And how many in this particular age group subject to?
Twenty.
Twenty in that age group?
One of the things that, um, starting the school at the sixth grade six, you're always looking for students and, uh, starting earlier, you get them into the system and hopefully we'll keep them. As opposed to always looking for a student that's already established in the school
So, um, the square footage requirement for the recreational playground area outside for kindergarten, it was 200 feet, and was it a different amount for the older kids?
435, I believe that, let me check.
It was 400.
430 square feet of usable outdoor recreation area for the grade four.
Okay. So the breakdown is kindergarten is the lower one.
K through three.
K through three. I understand you correctly said it's going to be like half of K through three and the other half of your enrollment potentially will be above the third.
Above grade, I'm sorry.
K through three is your intention to be half of your enrollment and the other half is going to be above, um, grade three?
Probably, uh, half the enrollment would be below fifth grade, and the other half above, six through 12.
So let's just say it's, it's the upper level, just say the average mean, the weighted average would be about, let's just say on the high side of 400 square feet, and you've got 45 kids?
Right. We're not pulling the upper school into this question. The upper school is a separate thing. What we're talking about is...
What I'm trying to show is just the nominal amount of land that, that would be required to fence, that non-material amount of land, trying to help the cause. And to real, to point out that it's a nominal area that's, that we're talking about being fenced, and what you all have out there is an abundance of area. That's what we're trying to demonstrate, since this question about fencing. So what I'm really trying to say is that 400 feet, if you have 45 kids, that's basically, I believe, 18,000 square feet? Is that right?
Yeah, 400, that's about right.
Close enough, so, so it's less than half an acre that we're talking about, the half of your fence, and you can take it half as to basically, there's a fence on every side, even on your farm side around there, so, I mean, there's an abundance of, of air.
It's an abundant area.
Any else, Ms. Chairman?
That's all.
Thank you. Uh, I was going to kind of point out the same thing. It seems to me from the overall scott size of the property, one thing you're not lacking is space. You might have to figure out where exactly to put fences, but it doesn't seem like a heavy width. With respect to the water, um, you know, this is something that comes up frequently. I, I feel like it's generally the practice for us to, um, make any recommendation that we provide contingent on meeting the requirements. Of course, the health department doesn't derive their authority from us, so if their numbers go up, they will be, uh, subject to the, the requirements, uh, based on the numbers that they're serving with those wells, so, um, that's my thoughts.
The well, did y'all put that in when you did renovations to the schoolhouse?
Yes.
So the well is what year?
94.
Uh, no, the one was, um, 99 or 2000.
So it's a modern well with growling and everything else?
Yes.
Historical well that shot out of the issue?
Not the 50-foot end of well. No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I just might add to that, that, um, first of all, I appreciate Ms. Smith, you know, being diligent on this and, you know, looking at the requirements carefully because that's a nice, nice standard to have. But I will say, uh, you know, being very familiar with the site and having been out to see what they've done, um, and being aware that they've already had two special exceptions provided to them, and to the best of my understanding and knowledge through the years, they've handled that exceptionally well and are reliable and responsible and provide, you know, an exceptional, exceptional community service through their school. I, I did not see any areas of concern myself out there, so I, you know, I, I, I think this looks like something, I know, I know you're anxious to get this, if, if, if it meets the requirements, you know, approved so that you can open in time for the school year if possible, um, so, uh, so, I, I do believe in being, um, careful about our requirements, but if it, if it seems to meet things, uh, I'm, I'm anxious to see, you know, be able to move forward with this. And again, I, I wouldn't have any concerns with making a contingent upon meeting health department requirements because I'm quite certain you'll do that.
To do that, anyway.
So...
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Um, I can try. I would like to make a motion therefore that, um, this is approved.
Recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Verdict.
I, I, I'm happy to defer you to give appropriate language, and then I can put it in the form of a motion if you'd like.
Well, I think, I, I think you were probably fine from there. I think it's apparent, we do like to make it clear that we are only the advisory body that makes the recommendation, and it's a common, it's, we do it probably four times in every meeting, so, uh, we're a good company, uh, but I, I think it is often pointed out that we are not the ultimate approval body, so, sorry to interrupt, but, um...
So, yes, I therefore would like to make a motion that we submit it for, recommend it for approval, um, contingent upon meeting health department, health department requirements related to the well.
Thank you. Um, I think that serves as a motion, is a... I think that serves as a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
I guess the only, only little caveat goes under there in terms of the well, if exists. If there's no, if conditions are required of the health department, it may well be, the health department has no issue with it.
Sure.
So if it exists.
So your motion was silent on the question of ensuring adequate fenced outdoor space. Seems like that's going to be, you know, certainly impossible. The only thought I have is whether we want to contemplate ensuring that in the motion.
Well, two thoughts on that. Again, I very much appreciate the attention focused on that. I guess part of the question is, you know, the amount of space needed per child, it sounds like. So if you don't have 20 children, for example, you know, you don't need that full amount of space that you might have if you had the full amount of students you hope to get at some point. Visually observing it, it appeared to be an adequate amount of space, but I don't have any objection, you know, to...
Well, it's your motion.
Yeah, so we can, I don't have any objection to including in that motion, you know, requirements and it mean, you know, that it provide adequate fencing for the requirements of the code.
Do you still second that motion?
I'll second that again.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you, all in favor of my, any opposed? Thank you very much. Now you are off to...
Oh, do we need to add time to this? How many minutes? We have, I believe we have 120 days.
For the, does this go to the...
This goes to the board supervisors. So I believe the planning commission is that it would be reasonable time and once it goes to the board supervisors.
Because I know we lost the last meeting. Okay, very good. Thank you.
May I ask a question to you and put it forward to the board supervisors for the August meeting?
It's up to Marie.
It's up to Marie?
Yes. They're not timed to F test properly for...
Thank you. Seize yourself or have the rest of me. The next item on the agenda is the revisitation of the rezoning number 190501 that Pleasant View, Bramble Harnock. This is to amend the property regarding the resource protection area. I'm sorry, Ms. Summers?
The rezoning was obtained for this property, tax act 2963G, the property. By rezoning 020201, the property was rezoned from agricultural to general commercial in 2002. The applicant was of view of Bramble Harnock, now wishes to amend the properties that were agreed to, specifically the resource protection area. This property is located at the intersection of Bank Road and Schoolhouse Road. If approved, this would be the new proposed site for the food pantry. This application was on the May 15, 2019, planning commission agenda for a preliminary review. The applicant did submit the requested property change, as well as received additional site plan for the specific lot for the food pantry. I posted two board docs and made copies for each commissioner tonight.
Thank you. And I believe representatives of the applicant are here. Do you have anything to add before we get started? With that, and with the aforementioned guidance to those who wish to speak, I will hereby open the public hearing on the rezoning.
Good evening. My name is Jared Christopher. I have the pleasure of living in the Hampton District. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Dever to be completely open and honest. A gentleman answered all of our questions, came to our house and sat down and talked about this. My wife and I own the property, I guess, to the south of, right inside, that's our driveway. And we have a culvert that goes under the road.
Bank Road. Are you saying your bank road or your driveway?
Well, the continuation of that. So the culvert that goes under the bank road and travels through the easement and then travels underneath our driveway. There's a creek in there, obviously, and that handles all of the water coming off of Hoover Hill. And what also happens is that the, there's a ditch along the west side of Schoolhouse Road that handles all the water from 211, the school board, the soccer fields, the elementary school roof, and the elementary school parking lot. And what happens to that water is it then goes under Schoolhouse Road, almost too close to our driveway, and then comes under the road and then hits the grass and then hits the easement. And basically the deluge that comes through there, it's undersized. In fact, we have, we recently had to prepare a hole that had happened in Schoolhouse Road on the shore, will wash out from all the water. The only thing that is protecting us is the easement, that and the turf, the 40 yards of turf that's in front of it. Energy service that I think is really going to make things better downstream, the watershed. Also, there, there egress, there's a 90-degree turn right there, right through the school. Not sure what sidelines will have to be met. I know we already employ three deputies to direct traffic in the morning. Is there going to be a fourth or what's that going to dial? Also, the things were said that, you know, the food pantry, they don't open two days during the week, they only weekend, leave. Once buildings are built, they don't go away. So what's that going to have to handle, or use for bigger trucks? I hope the food pantry does great. We're definitely enriching our community by helping. It's just the concern of the easement being disrupted. That's all I'm about to say. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher, if I could get you to clarify, help me to follow, if you could just identify maybe on the exit here or the tree on cue, where exactly is the area that you're talking about?
So this is our driveway.
Well, that helps.
Correct. And the culvert that comes underneath Schoolhouse Lane, basically right here, right at the north part of their drain field.
Could be at the drain, it must be on one side, it must be on this side of the drain. Well, that's a drain field site.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. I'm not sure if y'all caught that, but it's this. Yes, so it's the area right at that corner, basically crossing the school, going into, sort of going up on this design into that area with the drain field is reserved.
Correct. So the water that's already being handled there, plus the addition of a sizable parking lot and roof, I don't see a big difference.
Thanks very much. Anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you.
My name is Steve Leek. I live in Sperryville. My family has owned property in close proximity across Christian's driveway for 60 years. I grew up on it, I know it. Also, I've been in the excavating business for 37, 38 years. My personal, and I have not seen the plans for driveways or whatever, but I do know the Christians driveway is approximately 250 feet at a grade, at a slope. And where this driveway will be, it's more, more sloped. And that driveway starts on the other side of the creek. So, but, you know, like I say, I haven't seen that, so I don't really know, but I do know the land, there's no way in dark green earth it's going to perk. I put in drain fields for 36 years or whatever. It's not going to perk. It's always damp. If you dig down, I call post hole, you run into gray clay. So it's just, it's just not very good ground. If you get up further towards Bank Road, it gets better. Down there, that's all I can say, it's always wet. It, the driveway is going to be hard to get in there. And this is coming from 36, 37 years of experience putting in driveways. The stormwater from the school is getting pretty horrendous. I mean, with all the rain that's been passed and so forth, the road floods. It's, that road is almost always, it's any kind of storm, if it's open road, so. And that culvert runs right through where the proposed site for this building is. So my personal opinion, I don't see how it would work, but, you know, I don't know everything, but anyway, that's, that's basically all I need to say. And I'd be well, happy to meet anybody and look at it. They can tell me where I'm right along, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Klein. I own the property at the Christians' driveway, which is adjacent to proposed site. We were talking about the drain, the water from the schools. I have pictures from the last rain from last Thursday and what it looks like. I have them on a disc if anybody wants to see them. I also, and also...
Yeah, copies, we'd love to check that out.
Also, that there are photos of the Christopher's driveway when it was being put in and how the water drains down from that lot. The other thing I'm interested in is, has there been a soil study done on the property? The drain, the drain field, where is it going? And one of the things that I'm hearing is that your setback needs to be changed. Why does that need to be changed?
Sorry ma'am, but by setback, do you mean the conservation?
Right, right. Has there traffic study been done? I live right there, I see every day the kids coming into the school. No one knows how many parents drop their kids off and pick their kids up that don't ride buses. The ball field, when there are ball games there, there was a truck that went around that curve and took it too, too fast, went right over the bank where they want to put the, the food bank. And where is the entrance going today? Where, where is the entrance of the...
Well, I believe you missed that it's off of Bank Road, although one question I think we'll get back to is at one point I understood that there was a concept of having another egress or egress for Schoolhouse Road, we'll, we'll certainly discuss that.
I have no judgments to the food pantry, I think it does account a great deal of service. I just think this is not the place to put it. I understand it's the middle of the county, and, but I think, I think they're going to be dissatisfied if they put a building there. But I will give you the pictures. Like I said, it's the Christopher's driveway when it was being put in in 92, 94. And also, there's some pictures of the drain from last Thursday's rain and how it come, how the rain comes out of the new drains that the school put in down on the road. There's pictures of cars that had to back up and go through the parking lot for that. But I'll see.
Multiple copies, please.
That's the, that's the same one. And this is the one from, this, all of these are the Christopher's driveway.
We'll pass these round. There are questions I need to ask. Is this...
This is, this is from my, my court. See the water down here coming in and how it's coming down.
You answered my other question, but it's weird that it's your house that, that earlier says it all.
There's the other one of the park and how the water puddles. And this is one of the ball field where they took the rock wall out last, last couple of weeks and then the water, how it lays.
Thank you.
And that's the one of the culvert ran outside the school on the school.
Ah, so that's, this is the one that goes into...
Right.
And the other end of this is the one that... Thank you for those. Anyone else care to speak?
I'm Jared Butler. I live in Piedmont District and I'm not here to offend anyone, but I think I can contribute to the history of this property. I, my family owned it for 70 years and my mother's family had a connection to it for over 200 years. And when they put the school in and they directed all the school water to that property with two big culverts, they ruined the lower bottom of the property. I complained about it to the school board, they were to get back to me and they never did. So there, there has always been a water issue. It, it does come after Ginger Hill and froze through there in a big storm, but it's mainly the school water that has caused that small piece of property there to be unusual. And I just don't want anybody to make a mistake, build a building and have it flood out. There's another issue that most people here do not know, that my father had 28 acres of junk cars on that property and there was gas and oil leaking into the earth. And then they built the extra two lanes, the front of it had to be dug up and dried out for a year before they could build on it. So no harm really to anybody, but you need to do studies before you go into it. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this aspect here?
I'm John Nash in the Hampton District. We're good friends of the Christopher's. I just want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman. Most of us take all of your meetings and your deliberations and public comments very seriously. Sometimes we even go and watch them on a video. But if you ask people to come to the microphone and your first two issues weren't even calling the microphone and none of you have your microphones within 12 inches of your face, it's very, very difficult. The video is great, the audio is terrible. So if, if everybody would like move their microphones closer, then we could actually hear what you say, we'll be accountable. But, so anyway. One of the things that, I'm a lawyer, but not a, not a zoning lawyer, but one of the things that we learned in an earlier issue about progress is that progress are voluntary agreements by owners of real estate. is that properties are voluntary agreements by owners of real estate. And, um, they make voluntary restrictions on themselves in order to get the original zoning change. Um, this property was made with environmental setbacks and things like that. Uh, one shouldn't likely change that kind of property that was made at a farm's length, that kind of deal back in the day. Uh, if you, I don't know if you've been out there recently, or if, you know, if I, their Christopher's home is almost like a oasis, surrounded by commercial, but it's so beautiful, it's so wonderful. But you can see, you can see the screen pretty clearly, you can see the culverts, you can see all that. And, and, uh, I think the original offer would have restricted and would restrict this kind of activity there. And I think that, that you got overwhelming evidence that no damage is gonna be, no harm is gonna be intended by your actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Let anyone else care to speak?
Uh, my name is Eric Kossar, I'm in Piedmont District. I have volunteer marketing services to the food pantry to provide this building, hopefully on the site. I wanted, I wanted to come up, and I'll let, uh, Dan and Jimmy talk about our answers on the questions that came up this evening, but I wanna put it more, somewhat in context. I'm gonna pass around a, a, this is a site plan that shows the restrictions with the building restriction line, the parking restriction lines, and the hundred-foot walkway along the string.
This is the exist, sorry, this is the existing?
This is, this is in context to what, uh, Mr. Clark put together.
Yes.
Because it shows how this becomes very restrictive or almost not, not usual along Bank Street and School, and Schoolhouse. Um, there's other people here likely who was involved in the development. You know, I asked the question, I said, I need to know all the restrictions before I do a site plan. And we went through about five site plans that come to the one that we have. Uh, one of the things I even recommended and I've done from hundreds of times is just pipe the whole thing, which they felt was gonna be too expensive to pipe the entire pipe, or from, from point A to point B along from, uh, Bank Street up to the Christopher's property. Um, I'm gonna pass around, this is a, two, the two, the two plans I'm sending around. One is, well, you can send it, so.
These are, sorry, just to be clear, this is multiple copies of the same?
Multiple copies of a rendering. Now, this rendering was done before, uh, the, before the site plan that is before you today or, or that came up with, because I flipped the building around. At one time I wanted the building farther away from Schoolhouse, which right now is bringing the building closer to Schoolhouse next to the building restriction line. But the floor plan I've sent, also sent the floor plan, and it's multiple floor plans, that is the flipped building, which shows the food pantry entrance in the front and the, uh, offices in the back with the storage in the middle. Uh, this property, I believe we can make this work and meet all the other. We have met with the VDI and they have approved the entrances, both on Bank Street and on Schoolhouse. Now, one of the questions came up, have we done a traffic study? We met with VDI and they thought with what they've seen and lived out there, they didn't feel a traffic study was warranted at this time, um, because of the limited use, it's not a, a daily use. Um, I, I feel like this is centrally located in the county. It, they use, the high school students to do the backup program, so it's close to the schools. Uh, I think it's a good thing that the students, actually elementary school students, sees, sees this as a use that we're giving back to the community, which I think is a good use. Uh, I think we could meet all of the engineering type of, any kind of questions on engineering we can meet and solve, and, uh, that's, if I have any questions?
Could, can I just get you?
Yes, sir.
Two things, actually. First, I think it'd be helpful if we maybe, I mean, at least one set of these copies available to?
Yeah, there's five.
Uh, but could you just coordinate the, you know, where the view perspective is from on the site plan? Where am I standing, you know, basically here?
Okay. This got flipped. This building was over here farther, and so this entrance or this, uh, canopy is now on this side of the building.
Okay, so it's the same footprint, but it's just reversed, like spun around this way?
Goes with the, the floor plan. I, I flipped.
Okay. But we're, but, but the, but the building still sits in this footprint?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and I'm standing?
Yours, right now, you'd be standing, looking this way, and this right now is flipped. This canopy on the other side, so it's within this footprint.
But here, I'm, I'm roughly here, is this?
Yes.
Right, roughly here?
Or maybe a little bit farther than over here.
So I'm, I'm kinda looking, so the entrance is over here, but that's somewhere, coming in from that side?
Correct, okay. And the other thing is, and I think Jimmy and Mr. Clark talked about this, is they, they had done studies for Centifill and for the well.
Okay.
So, they've already done reviews of those two issues.
I don't wanna get all the information here to, for folks to understand the orientation of these, uh, these pictures. I, I was trying to figure out where we were here, and what we're saying is, this picture is sort of from kind of the edge of the road near the school, but the building is oriented the other way.
You're, you're basically at the corner of Bank Street and School Street with that elevation. The only difference is, is the canopy or the, is on the other side of the building here.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to, uh, speak on this application? And I would be glad to, if these, if I did, if you could, if you could pass them around, or the copies now. Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Mack, help me act for the district. Uh, I was on the school board twenty-some years ago when we dealt with this issue with drainage from, from the elementary school. Uh, at the time, uh, I was actually opposed to the solution, and I felt it was not proper for the county to be diverting more water onto someone else's property. What we're looking at here, and I support both sides of this issue, I think, you know, we, you know, the food, the food bank, this is a great location, but we've gotta look at this drainage, the county has to look at this drainage issue, because there's also another piece of property there, which is also, uh, up for some type of commercial development. So you can't just look at this single piece of property and, and make a decision. You have to, we've gotta look at the whole situation and come up with some plan to deal with the drainage for this whole area, so that the pantry can have their facility, and when some, somebody else wants to put something across the street, that drainage is also gonna end up going to the same place, but you have to deal with the whole issue now. You can't do it piece for piece. So, I mean, I, I think, yeah, the county is gonna have to step up and, and do some type of a drainage study here that's gonna handle that, plus, you know, taking into account what comes off the school property.
Thank you. Anyone else like to do studies? Any other public comment? All right, I will hereby close.
Can I ask a question?
Sir?
Is the building proposed, use the microphone?
Yeah, use the microphone, would you please, so that we got?
Is the building, I'm sorry, is the building being proposed at Bank Road and Schoolhouse Road? Or is it being proposed at the bottom next to the Christian's Park?
It's at, at the corner of Banks and Schoolhouse, in that, in that lot. So, two elevens up here. So, so there's Bank and there's Schoolhouse.
And all this down here, this is the back of?
This is the driveway, this is.
I, I still, the drainage is, I'm, I'm, I'm not against the food pantry, I'm not. I think it's a great thing, it's, it's great, I'm really not. But I know from being there sixty years what that drainage is, and it needs to be, and, and the soil is not good. I mean, it's gonna have to be undercut and filled and, it's, it's, I understand, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Would anyone else care to speak? All right, I will hereby close the public hearing on the, uh, reserving the application to the 0501, and turn to commission. Uh, Mr. Henry, I believe this is in your district, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I was on the planning commission back, um, just seventeen years ago when we approved, uh, the seventy people on this property. And there was a lot of tension back, back then about the traffic flow, particularly out at the Schoolhouse Road and the safety of, of the Schoolhouse Road, and, and traffic through Bank Road and the impact there. Uh, and there was not a lot to be said about the resource areas and the drainage areas and these kind of things on this flat. The primary focus of the public in the commission at that time was, was the traffic, and this was in the, uh, commercial area out there for future development. And so, the property did end up getting, uh, resumbed and, uh, with these properties sort of offered back at that time. Um, I think this, uh, what we have up here now on the open heads, uh, probably says a lot more than what the site plan here that we've been looking at, that was done by the March twenty-seventh and then updated twenty-sixth. This stuff shows that the drainage area, uh, that we're dealing with, and I guess the, uh, PBS is proposed building space, I guess, is what that PBS stands for?
Yeah, possible. And in case of Lot Four, I believe the one that we're actually, that they're talking about is the lower one. Look at Lot Four there, too, but the one more or less seems to be the one at the bottom.
Yeah, well, this, this property is, what, one point four, is it something like this? One point four?
One point four acres, roughly?
Yeah, so, when you look at that flat there, it's all very shady, I'll show what you wanna call it. It looks like we're, we're dealing with approximately a half an acre where all this is gonna transpire. And was, was there any reason why this building couldn't be placed where it says Lot Four? In that white area there? Somebody tell me, was it not possible to, to fit this building into that area there? Somebody tell me that this?
It's kinda steeper there.
It's steeper?
Yeah.
So, the, the PBS there, would that entail a pump system up to the drain field area?
Yes, or?
And, and you couldn't get in the parking places that, uh, is proposed here, the thirty-six? I guess we'll talk about thirty-six parking places here? Is that, was that the issue there?
Yeah, we didn't even look at the other side for a few minutes.
It was just too steep?
Uh, nobody asked me to, to investigate that.
There's a, uh, now, there's a, if you look at the L part on Lot Four there that's going along Bank Road, that is, there's a drain field easement there, that entire part of the L is, is for drain field for Lot Two over at, next to the bank.
And that's a pretty good slope.
It was owned by, the county, of the county, we have county offices out there, when they owned it, they drilled a well on Lot Two, and that area was needed with Lot Two as their drain field area. So it takes up most of that L part there, and if you have the drain field there, we just stopped trying to come in there, we just didn't have the space we wanted. It, it, it does look bigger on that flat there, but again, a lot of it is designated for drain field.
But you're talking about Lot Two or Lot Three?
Yeah, see Lot Two up there is the bank?
I'm talking about Lot Four.
I understand, and I'm saying the drain field on Lot Four, that doesn't mean it is for Lot Two. It can't be. And this is underneath.
I mean, the runway up high is where it actually says Lot Four in the, yeah, gold. Right here. Right here, you're talking about, right from this up to here?
Yeah.
The grays, the grays are coming down from the Christopher's this direction, towards the road, so they're coming down to the creek. So you don't have a whole lot of room in here without doing a good deal of grading. And this is a pretty good grade coming down here as well. Maybe over disgrading this parking in there. Um, but this drain field here serves this lot up here. That's what, that's what he's talking about, this is an easement. Uh, the Banks drain field is way back here on Lot Three, so.
It has that existing drain field or just a?
This one here is an existing drain field here.
Right, but the one on Lot Four is, is just?
These are, this is the proposed. So, all these, where we have these DFs, somebody asked earlier, these are all sites that were approved by Barry Hadley, who's a soil scientist.
That's a recent approval?
Yes. Well, this one, this one, he just confirmed again, and this, these are the two new ones that he put in.
That, that is on the acre and a half lot, and there's four drain field sites on?
This is bigger, this, this is bigger than an acre and a half. We were, we're talking about making about an acre, and that, maybe acre and a half just with this part of the property. I don't, I'm not sure how big the property is, it's not bigger than acre and a half. Work the drain field for Lot Three? Actually, the drain field for Lot Three, I think, is up on the other side of, uh, the creek. Yeah, if you, if you pan north, there's that drain field up there, so. So, the Lot Four that we're looking at is not really the Lot Four that we're gonna be doing the pantry? So you just? These are, these are future potentials. This is, the way they laid it out on the, on the, uh, original plan is they showed that each one of these lots had other future sites that could be divided off in the general. I think you just said there's gonna be a boundary adjustment done, and this is gonna? Well, this, we would do a division to create a, a separate parcel just for the food pantry. Uh, the, the general, the general commercial's one acre zoning, right? So.
Dan, that, the drain, the dark green through the middle is the creek, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's, right, that's the wooded area around the drain right there.
Okay, and the other green area up next to Schoolhouse Road?
Yeah, this is the, yeah, that's the wooded section.
So where does that water go?
That water's coming through right here, right now. And that water just comes in and just dumps right into the, onto the ground.
And it runs right down to the?
Yeah, well, there's no ditch or anything there, so it's, it's, yeah, it just pans out.
Should be a hand change, so.
It, it runs to, you can't walk through there when there's any rain at all and make your feet wet. I promise you, this water running to that creek?
Yeah. I'm not gonna speak now.
Thank you, um, let's, let's, let's keep.
So, so Lot Four presently, Dan, is how big? No, I don't know the exact size, I don't have it.
About four acres down.
Four acres, not enough for, okay. So, three and a half, so, propose one point four, do you propose a one point four or? About, about an acre, an acre and a quarter, I think, something like, up to an acre and a half, I guess.
Yeah.
So, uh, this, this site plan that we're looking at, are there gonna be any stormwater retention ponds? We haven't even gotten that part yet. And we'll, it will be, we still have to deal with engineer. So, we, we wanted to deal with proppers first, and, okay, if, if, there's no use even doing anything, we don't get the proper state care, so that would be the next step. No use spending a lot of money on engineering.
Thank you.
And in this, uh, so we're looking at thirty-six spaces, and, uh, all of that's gonna be pavement, right? It could be gravel, doesn't have to be pavement. It'd be kinda hard for food pantry equip with people, people with handicaps to come in. That's, that's up to seven gravel. Up to you guys.
Could be garden chip.
Garden chip, too. Well, it's gonna be a permanent service and runoff.
I would recommend.
Right. And, and, uh?
And stormwater, the stormwater management line required, how much, could be done underground?
Yeah, there's a lot of different designs, but. So, you're gonna have a, I mean, this one acre site, I mean, it's hard to tell, but, but, uh, but, but it looks like you're gonna have a substantial area under pavement here. I mean, it looks like to me, maybe?
It's all of them.
Probably over half of it is gonna be? Half of the site? Yeah, with the way you got the parking laid out here, I mean. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's a pretty good amount of the site is gonna be, have some sort of surface gravel or, or, or pavement and garden chip and building. So, yeah, it's gonna be, I would say fifty percent of the site. So, yeah, it's gonna be, I would say fifty percent of the site.
Looking at this building here, it gives the appearance of a two-story building. Is that an illusion?
Uh, yes, because it's a story and a half of the area where the food pantry will dig is going to be open and be like fourteen feet high. And then the story in the back is more for storage of food coming in.
So you said a story and a half, so there is?
Story and a half, fourteen, sixteen feet.
So there is gonna be some second floor area?
No, no, no.
Just all over. So that's, so then it's one story with?
It's one story with.
The whole area, right.
Yes, sir.
This total building is proposed to be about thirty-five hundred fifty square feet.
Yeah, that's what we're showing right here.
Plus the portions?
Yes.
Is anybody capitalizing the, how big a drain field is at this size building? How do they calculate the sewer disposal for this size parcel? Is anybody looking at that?
I believe they did. I believe they did based on the size of the building and the usage.
So is it gonna be a ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot drain field?
The drain fields are located on a plan I've been told were designed for the building size.
Yeah, that's what the, I have the, that's something that Barry Hadley has put together for the health department.
So the way these are scaled, Dan, how much, can you tell me roughly what the drain field size is that you're talking about?
There are, I don't have the square footage, but so they're fairly small, reserve areas. That's probably about forty-five, fifty feet, forty-five feet by eighty, something like that. You have a ruler, I can scale it.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Does anybody have a ruler?
I guess, you know, when we look at the, to show what the resource area is now and where it's gonna be used to, and then when you show, you know, the impact of the site development, it's starting to get to be a pretty busy site.
Yeah. Al, now the soil scientist, Hadley worked for Greenway Engineering when the property was originally laid out in this block. And so I thought it'd be best to, and he's since left Greenway and started his own business over in Woodstock, in Little County. So I thought it'd be best to have him come over and look at it since he was familiar with the area. And so I'm not sure of the terminology, but the systems he designed there aren't your typical septic tank and drain field. It's gonna be a septic tank and I would say a pump tank that go up in that corner. And then it goes into some kind of treatment that's, you know, innovative more than when I used to work with the health department forty years ago. So I'm not sure what happens, but the drain field size is smaller than what I would think a drain field would be, but it's also receiving some other treatment that I guess is current with health department standards.
So is this gonna be an alternative system that's gonna entail P malls? Or is it gonna be a discharge into the stream?
No, sir. There's definitely not a discharge into the stream. But I do not know the particulars of what, you know, he designed or discussed with the health department.
The side of the drain field is twenty-five by about fifty.
The one in the lower right corner, the one, the main one that we used to do.
Do you have the other picture that I gave you? About the color on that?
May I say something, Mr. Lee? Al may remember this. When the was, the general overlay was branded for that area, the initial plan was that there would be a septic system built to serve the whole commercial area and both schools. But that land that was purchased from Mr. Lee for that purpose was used to build the third gym. So there went that plan.
I've answered that question.
Were you planning to point something out, Mr. Clerk?
Uh-oh, miss. I don't know what we're at. The color site gives you an idea of where.
Okay, well, there'll probably be more opportunities. Mr. Kohler, would you like to add your opinion to this?
So we have an alternative system sometime, we don't know where it is.
Yeah, I haven't even looked at the, I just located the drain fields and put them on the map. I didn't have, didn't even study.
Where the exit road is coming out onto Bank Road, onto Schoolhouse Road.
Right.
That's, that's a fairly steep drop off.
The other one.
Oh, you don't have one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that entrance on this block.
Yeah, that's not on, let's see, it's on this one.
That's about all you get to see of it.
And then this is the one that you've shrunk up. I got a bigger copy of that if you want.
But that comes uphill.
That's gonna be, that would be uphill, you're right.
Pretty steep.
Not as steep as it is back where this well is. So, yes.
So where is that relative to the culvert on Bank Road or under?
Do you have that?
Sorry, school. That, do you?
The culvert to Christopher's?
It seems to be up there. That's sort of upside down to my, I think I got it. Okay, here we go. Yeah, this, this is up, this is up.
All right, so, questions?
Well, we're talking about this.
Yeah, so that, that drainage is coming out in here.
Uh-huh.
Roughly.
Coming out from where?
From the school.
From the school. What about the water coming down the road?
The water that's coming down the road is just spilling over onto the edge, spreading off of the ice.
And the, is that water under Schoolhouse, Fred?
There's a culvert right under here somewhere. And then there's the culvert for Christopher's right here somewhere. And then there's an existing culvert.
So, okay, cool, let's bring it over here. Probably it's only coming this far, it's dumping out.
Right, right. That's something we have to address.
Right. And, and what is the slope on this?
I don't know what it is exactly.
Twenty-five percent?
I don't want you to guess, but it's pretty steep. The. The further you get down here, the less steep it is. This is the steepest section.
Yeah, up here, yeah.
So are we addressing the site plan for now or are we addressing the proppers now?
Well, we're addressing the proppers, but I think what we're trying to understand, you know, there's a chicken and egg with respect to, you know, we're asking to, to reduce the conservation zone. And I think what we're trying to establish is that there's a protective way of doing that. So it's a little hard without the particulars on the site plan. I understand that you don't wanna do the site plan and the engineering, but, you know, it's also making our job more difficult to try to assess the protectiveness of the alternative proppers.
They were having a division of this lot now.
Yeah, they did. This would end up being one of the sites that, like this, or collars the stream or?
Somewhere, somewhere along the stream.
Yeah. And I think when I, when I first submitted this one, we were talking about only reducing a portion of it here. And then after the last one, we had talked and then showed all this.
And we're going across. And let's, this, we're at ten feet here. So we have about, what do we have here?
I don't know about, sorry, we can just, let's order. I understand this is tedious, but I think in order for the commission to get our understanding permits, I'd like to.
Well, just like you, that's ten feet all the way down to about here.
Mr. Lee, there are two culverts there, not one.
There's two culverts?
Two feeding from the schools. Two feeding from the schools.
The same, right next to each other?
No, one at the low beach end.
Oh, there's another one at the other end?
Yes, yes.
All right. Mr. Kohler?
He's by the tree right now.
It is.
Brush.
Then what's the setback of this, of schoolhouse?
Fifty feet is the building setback and then there's a forty-foot wide parking restriction area.
Parking restriction. Well, what is, what would be the standard setback on this road?
I think the standard setback is fifty feet.
Because this is the main one.
This is from the?
This is where we're coming, well, actually, we're coming on for this too. So.
It looks like the green line is the fifty-foot setback.
Yeah. That's all, I might ask more questions, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the, if I understand what you're saying, first of all, you have, you're proposing two entrances, so there will be, or maybe this is an entrance on Bank Road and this is an exit?
Right, they want an entrance on Bank Road.
If I could ask the folks in the audience to kind of keep the background conversations to a minimum, please.
Sorry. All right, so there's a, they would like an entrance for, they have a box that comes in and does load it. So they want an entrance for that box where it goes through and it comes back out rather than having to get in here and have to turn around.
And so right now, as I understand it, so there's, there's drainage kind of coming from a lot of directions into this parcel, if I'm right? Correct me if I'm not. You've got drainage coming off Ginger Hill, this way. You've got drainage coming from the school, which sometimes overflows the road or, or slopes down from the school, I think, into this culvert. And then you've got a slope here, you said, so there's drainage coming down this direction as well. So you have drainage coming free.
Drainage from Bank Road?
Coming that way as well. And you've got other lots surrounding it that are potentially developable lots. And so right now, you have a fifty-foot setback from where all the water's pouring into. And what you're proposing, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you want ten feet instead from the stream on the west, west side and fifteen feet on the east side, but you're gonna kind of cut that lot off about there.
So probably somewhere along, along either the center of the stream or, you know, somewhere close to that.
And so you're gonna be creating, the intent would be to create a second or lot number whatever?
Yes.
On this steeper part up here?
Well, this, this, well, this prop, this, this one has a potential building site here, so that would be a residue.
So this has a potential building site. When you, when you're thinking of making another lot, that's because that has another potential building site up there?
That's right, right.
On this area?
If you look at the general development plan, can you put that back up? Now, the, the, that general development plan shows. So general commercial is one acre of zoning. So there's a potential site here, 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 this site here, this site here, and these two sites here. So, you know, this one doesn't have enough road frontage really to allow it to be divided up, I don't believe, without building another road back in here. And this one with, this is all the lowland along this creek, so there's no, there's nothing you can do back here for a building site. So there really, these show all the potential building sites for this, for the general development, future development of these lots.
And all these lots generally, at the moment, from existing topography are draining right into this fifty-foot bucket?
Well, no, this, I mean, they're not all, the waters, there's water flowing this way, there's another stream up here. So there's water that's going this direction. And there's water coming here and going that direction. So not all of it's coming to this site. I think that, I can't remember where the, I think it starts to slope this direction somewhere along here. So waters, water is, I guess that would be considered your dividing line for water going north, water going south or east and west.
And thanks. And so you are proposing to create essentially in this area that's lined off and glued here on our map, the fifty-foot bucket area, that would be, you're creating an impervious surface almost up to where your ten-foot bucket would be because you're gonna have to put a road here to get to your loading canopy and connect through to here. So this is gonna be parking space that's impervious, this is impervious. This all is impervious with the rooftop added.
Right, right.
And this is impervious. So basically, your entire use of what you planned to be the new, the new lot would be impervious surface.
Right. Get portion of it. And then there's a, then, once we get to the, past this resource protection area, then we can start new design. Get a new engineer, a couple engineers to talk to or something. And then we would, you know, this design, what's gonna change once we go to that? And we'll be back to that new design for approval once we get it finalized.
Okay, thanks. One last question is, for me at least at the moment, is, so right now, just having been looked at at the site today, as I see it, so Schoolhouse Road is right here, and then there's a fairly sharp, straight drop down there. And so you're planning on putting your parking spaces?
The parking spaces are all of these, so this, this is a buffer forty feet from the right of way, which is probably, that's probably up seventy feet from here to, I think that right away is twenty-five feet there.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
So there's twenty-five, you have from the center of the road, you have twenty-five feet to the right of way, then another forty feet here to the, where parking has to stop, plus another ten to the building. So we can't build, we can't build any parking past this pink line.
This one right here?
Yeah, this, this one right here.
Oh, that one, okay.
So there's, that's where, there's gonna be a couple spaces here, a couple here. And then we have to maintain that distance from the drain field on all these buildings and the impervious surfaces.
So do you know, would you happen to know, right now, I noticed there was a buffer of trees and it's shown on the bottom of lot four there on Schoolhouse Road, do you know how wide that buffer of trees is approximately at the moment? How much would you have to take out of that?
That's a good question. I don't know how wide it is, maybe?
I think it's forty feet.
About forty feet wide?
About forty feet. So it's in the parking restriction line.
So that the tree, that, that tree down at the bottom is about forty, that strip of trees is about forty feet wide?
It's forty feet from the property line, which is off of, it's off of Schoolhouse Road.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, extending from Schoolhouse Road back toward the stream, how wide, would you happen to have any idea how wide that buffer of trees is right now?
So, I'm sorry.
So, so starting at Schoolhouse Road from the drop down and then over toward the stream, there's an existing buffer?
Right. It'd give me forty to forty to fifty feet. It's, it's not, it's, some of it's in the right of way, it comes closer to the, closer to the edge of the road. So some of that is in the right of way. And there will, there'll be a well in there. And so I don't know how much, I can't, I don't know that you have an intent to take out all of the trees, but I'm sure that there will be a few that will disappear.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just wondered, in the course of the design work, what were the considerations? I believe this property is in the commercial overlay zone, so were all those considerations taken into account as well?
There is a number of proppers that were put on the property when, including these easements, which is the building has to be, can be a pre-engineered building, it has to be faced with either brick, stucco, or some kind of siding. There, and there's a height limitation, I believe. There is a number of restrictions that we were.
Use restrictions as well?
Use.
Yeah, use.
Yeah, the stormwater management structures in particular are a lot of concern to me because there does appear to be so much water flowing through this property. And I know it's a little bit of, well, I know it's a little bit of chicken and egg here.
Right.
But it is a, it is a large concern. And I understand your reluctance to spend the money on engineering.
Right.
But until we see what's gonna happen.
Right, well, we.
I'm sure you might understand our reluctance to do the proper.
I get where you're coming from on that, so.
I would think that if it would be a permanent situation, it would have to be engineering requirements. We're, you know, that's the next step. So let's say you recommended this go for the board as the, removing the conservation restriction. We still have to go and meet all the other requirements. If you put it as a restriction, we just have to meet them. That's what we hope to do. The stormwater can be done underground. I've done a number of, of my sites over the past thirty years underground. But again, that might be cost prohibitive, so we may decide not to move forward, even with an approval of, of removing the conservation restriction. So we would hope that you would give us an opportunity to go to the next step and see if we can make this work.
Anything else, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Mr. Park, being a renowned engineer, as you are, I'm not a good engineer, I'm just sort of, it's great that you have a. Mr. Park, being a renowned engineer, which you are, I'm not a good engineer, I'm just a sort of, it's great that you have occurred all these years and all your evaluations and projects. I know you know the answer to this question. It kind of slips my mind. Refresh my memory on what is, how many gallons is one inch of rain over an acre of land?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer. I don't get into hydrology that much, but I think, I wouldn't say it was like 220,000 gallons. It's a large amount.
Yeah. So, we're covering up a half an acre of this plus or minus here. What is the purpose, maybe not this specific, what is the purpose of stormwater management? Is it to slow down the water, to store it?
Slow it down, store it, and filter it, and release it slowly. We were to capture the, capture sediment.
So, so the project like this, if you're dealing with, I don't know, if you're dealing with a half a gallon of water or something, what would that entail? I mean, is that, is this-
There's different, there's so many different methods. There's underground, you can catch rainwater coming out of the downspouts. You can catch things on the edges of the pavement, and even doing impervious pavement that catches water underground and stores it. There's ponds, there's all sorts of, rain gardens, all sorts of things that can be done. And so what the engineer does, if he looks at a storm design, probably a 25-year storm, tries to figure out what, how much water is going to be coming onto this site and how much he has to capture. And he comes up with all these solutions, and there might be more than one solution in order to capture it all.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark, the, I can understand the reason why you're trying, why the applicant wants to move the resource protection close to the creek. Why is it, is it moving on the other side of the creek?
Well, this is because that potential building site's over there, where you might, this is the area where you want to do additional parking. And with the site here, you don't have a whole lot without doing a lot of grading over here to flatten things out. Plus, you can't do too much close to this drainage field. You can't flatten the earth up close to the drainage field. So, you've got to, that would give them some more potential over there. So we figured if we're going to be dealing with, this is the site, this is the one site that has the most impact from this resource protection area, this Lot 4. So this one is, since it's got the highest impact, we felt it was only a good idea to deal with this one right now, not do anything on the others. The others have plenty of space. So we're not changing anything on the other lots as far as the 100-foot buffer or 100-foot resource protection area that's just on this site.
So then we will be, we're actually done with two lots here that were-
Yeah, we'll end up with two lots, a good potential.
Thank you all. This is a challenging situation. I think we all feel very positively about the food pantry. We'd like to see this. But I, having heard this discussion, I don't quite know the history of why there was a 100-foot conservation reserve area, but I can see the wisdom of it now that we've had this conversation. And I guess the obvious question is, if this is the most impacted, most water-challenged lot, why are we proposing for it to be the next one developed and not one of the others that wouldn't have this problem? So, I, I know that's not really, you know, I'm not necessarily, I don't think it's really our right to demand an answer to that question, but I think anybody looking at this situation would rationally ask that question.
It certainly begs that question.
Thanks. You know, I understand the, the, the concern for doing more engineering, and I have a great deal of respect for all the work that you've done to address this, but I feel like the work really hasn't addressed the concern, which is the water. And that is, we raised that at the last meeting, there was some talk about redirecting. I understand that you have many options, but from my point of view, in order to feel like we're doing our job to ensure that a rezoning application, and essentially that's what this is. And I think we're looking, we have to look at this, and obviously, we're not where we were when this was originally approved. But given the concerns of the time this was done, it seems to me that this would have been hard to swallow at that time. And I, I think is at least reasonable to question, but this would have been approved without the 100-foot protection area originally, given what we understood then as the drainage issues around the site with this school, et cetera. So I guess, I don't have anything else to ask at this time. I, and I understand and completely respect that it's the difficulties of doing the engineering work to, to figure out the water challenge, but I do feel like that's an issue that hasn't really been addressed. If I could just summarize the discussion that I've heard and include my own considerations. Any, anything else from the commission or thoughts on whether and how to move this? Mr. Henry, I believe is in your district, so first look to you if you have any thoughts.
Well, my thought for this, you know, this is a commercial zone area, and this is where we've designated commercial activity to occur in this area. And I think the bank's original concept here was a good one, and having Bank Road and the layout of the lots and the flow of traffic proposed here, and it has worked very well since they rezoned it. There's not really been any traffic issues, and this has probably helped some, to decongest the, the use of very particular schools having a function. So I think it's been, this was good planning when all this was done. I think what we're looking at right here now is going to the very, very max of what this property could support. I think a rezoning, I mean, a subdivision here to a one-acre site could be appropriate, provided that it was a less use of a building. For example, if it was an office that had a couple professionals in it and they needed 10 parking places instead of 36 parking places, and the flow of traffic maybe was reduced to where they only needed one entrance. And therefore, you know, the whole impact would be greatly reduced, and the footprint of the building may be a half of what's being proposed here. So, you know, I'm not against them subdividing it, and I'm not against, you know, the use of this property. I just think that the use here is just going to the very edge of what the property can support. And, you know, the flow of water here, it needs to be managed. And I just don't know what it's going to take to manage this water. And I just think we really can't decide until we have more indication of, of how this water is going to be managed. And because there's a lot of impact from this property being developed, and there's a lot of impact from the flow of water onto the site from the joint properties and everything else. So it's very difficult to say that a reduction in this resource area is appropriate at this moment with the amount of information that we have before us, so that's what I'm hoping.
So, would you like to make a motion of some sort?
Maybe so, that's a different deal.
Well, if anybody had-
Well, I'm, I'm very in favor of the food pantry, and I think it's a wonderful asset in the county. I understand the limitations of this lot. I guess one question I have is, there's a lot of parking here. Is this really, how did that number of parking spaces come to be? I mean, is it very-
I think there's more than what the site needed, actually. It came down to the number of people that come presently to the food pantry, and they have a number of volunteers that you probably all know. And the volunteers outnumber the clients, but that's how it operates, the way it operates. So, can it be reduced? In some ways, it may be reduced. A couple parking spaces, just because of the way they handicap, spaces are shown on the drawings. We need a van space, we're probably going to need some more, take away some of the parking for some of the truck or for, there's not, we don't show right now, we haven't developed it, but like for the trash dumpsters, which both would be garbage and cardboard. So, those aren't shown, and they will take up parking spaces.
Right now, the food pantry serves about half of the population, only the population in the county. So you build a new food pantry, you put it in the central part of the county, you might double the size of the parking lot. Because people will not drive to the current pantry from Amistow or Chester Gump. So that was one of the reasons to go to the center of the county, make it more accessible. Build it, enable parking.
So at any one time, how many, how many cars are at the pantry now?
20.
May I say something? We have a morning crew that comes in, and that's usually six or seven cars. And then we have the afternoon crew that comes in, and that's another six or seven cars. So they overlap, but basically, they're not that many car park all day, except for the few people who are there all day. But it's the clients that come and go and come and go. So listen, we don't, you know, use 36 spaces, but if we have the office and they have people that come and go from the office, we would need a fair number. Does it have to be 36? No, not really.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think this through.
One of the things also you need to note, the projection is to put the benevolent fund and give them an office in the food pantry. Now, how many clients do they have a day, you know, when they're open towards the pantry? So, I mean, it's not only the food pantry, it's also going to be possibly the benevolent fund.
That's the office here on the west side of the building.
So if the, if the drainage fields were on the other side of the creek, that would open up more parking up in, well, it would open up some parking up in this area, up in the, here at Schoolhouse Road.
No, the drainage fields won't open. If we leave the drainage fields away from this side of the site, it doesn't open up any parking. And also, the parking, the way it's laid out, is laid out with, since volunteers on the west end of the site and the customers on the east end of the site. The original plan that I brought in actually showed not taking all of the resource protection may be just what we needed for this particular site. I think it was Holly that suggested that we go ahead and deal with the whole proffer for what would be best for the future of these, this lot. So that's where I went back to the drawing board with the proffers at her recommendation. So, my first thought was just get what we needed to accomplish what we needed for the food pantry, so.
Look, I'm seeing a little more down here, though.
What's that?
Over by the other side.
Yeah, yeah, with the proffers that we put in, I'm accomplishing more than, I'm not sure exactly what we're going to be accomplishing by getting 15 feet on the other side, but.
I would certainly appreciate your sharing the information, you know, being transparent about what you're looking at. Anybody have any other comments? Again, I know we've been around, certainly had more general conversation and discussion, but I guess at some point I'm looking for some suggestion on either a request or a motion to how we handle this, how we dispense with this evening.
Well, I've given money to the food pantry in the past, and I've encouraged our church to give money to the food pantry at various times throughout the year. And I encourage other people to give us money to the food pantry whenever I can, have the opportunity, and very much support what they're doing. And I guess, the problem we have here too is recognizing some issue that in Rappahanna County, the father who's many years ago tried to limit the areas in the county that could be commercial and developed. And what we have as a result of that is properties like these that are still vacant and which are so difficult to work out a plan for that, yet again, limits the opportunity to have a commercial development here. And here and now, the benevolent fund is going to have an office here and recognizing that they're going to have patrons coming in, and I guess there's going to be potential for meeting meetings and this kind of thing, and a more intense use of this property and looking at the water flow here. I'm inclined, I make a motion that we decline the, the reduction in the-
Proffer.
Proffer of the resource area.
Resource area, thank you. Would you have a-
I do have a great motion, but I would hope that it can be a better site and a better plan that's more simple, less costly, and all these things someplace in that area. So that's, that's my motion, is that we deny the request.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. You have a motion?
I just want to echo Mr. Henry's sentiments about the intentions and the actions of the pantry. The services they provide to the county is commendable, and, you know, maybe the job you do there is very difficult and appreciated by a very many people. At the same time, what's before us is simply this proffer, and we need to look at it as we would for any applicant. And I'd like to second Mr. Henry's motion in regard to the proffer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion, and it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
May I, I would say, I also cannot say great words for the food pantry, for their board, for their staff, for their patrons, frankly. I mean, they're one of the finest assets in the county. They've clearly gotten Mr. Lassard to be their architect, who's, I think, one of our finest assets as far as that in the county. And I don't doubt that they are putting every effort into making this the right site. But in 2000, I also was working heavily with Rapflo, who also brings, you know, a lot of assets to this community. And I know one of the things that they've focused on for our county is vegetative buffers. And the value of vegetative buffers is that, for example, even if you pipe this, you may be able to put very expensive underground systems that absorb the water. But in general, if you just pipe it through, you've lost all the absorption that the vegetation that's on that site right now provides. So you're transferring the problem from that site to downstream sites, and I think that needs to be borne in mind as well. And I also can't help but note, when I first looked at this, the unusual shape of Lot 4, and I can't help wonder whether it was configured that way to give a couple of usable potential sites of various types on it. And in fact, it sounds like they consider parts of this site to be usable. And, but, but they're focusing on this area that's kind of the key vegetated portion of it. And that's, that could have, you know, consequences for, for a lot of other properties as well as this. So that raises concerns with me, so I, I'm inclined to support the motion.
If there's another discussion or call question?
Well, I'd like to say something.
Well, I guess there's no discussion.
Please.
The, I, I think this is a tough spot, and I, and I, I would like to see some sort of way to not lose all the buffer and still have the pantry there. And I'm not sure what that answer is, but if we could somehow keep a little more of the buffer and somehow work on entry or something a little differently, or something that would preserve some of that, I would be more inclined to, to be in favor. preserve some of that, I would be more inclined to be in favor.
All right, just add before we take the vote, like I said, I support the pantry's great use, seems like a challenging site. I think we, I hope it's clear that we are open to creativity in how we address this, but that just, I'm inclined to favor this motion as well. So with that, I think we'll call, all in favor of the motion to recommend denial of the revision to the proffers as proposed, signify our statement.
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
Will we ask for what reason?
Well, I would like, I guess, I don't know, maybe perhaps procedurally I'm wrong, but I'd like to see if they could come back with a different plan that would satisfy the commission.
Well, there's nothing about the motion is to recommend denial of the request as presented. There's nothing about that that has any bearing on any future proposal that might be made. So you're free to vote as you see fit, but I don't think any of us are, by virtue of this vote, you know, writing every possibility off here. I just want to make that clear.
All right. The vote's been done.
Okay. Well, thank you very much again, the sympathies and encouragement to try to find a good spot. Let's lead us through our next item of new business. Why don't we interest most white ones about five minutes. Ms. Summers.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I did want to recuse myself from this appointment and discussion due to a relationship of immediate member of my family.
By all means, thank you. Ms. Summers, do you care to tee us up?
Thank you. Mr. Halberg has applied for a special use permit for a category one farm laboratory located in Non-Joshua Land. This use is allowed in the village residential zoning district per Rappahann County Code one seventy-three sixteen. A special exception was granted to this property by permit eighteen oh six oh one for an adapted use for Dulcimer Museum on August fourteenth of eighteen. Mr. Halberg wishes this application to coexist with his permit already granted. The Health Department commented that have no objections to the proposed use as long as the necessary applications comply with our office. The subject is on Sperryville Sewer, therefore there's no one-site subject. The well has been referred to the office of drinking water. This application was on your last agenda. It was tabled due to the applicant not being present. He is peer present to me for any questions. Also, there was handouts provided. Mr. Halberg provided a floor plan with some notations on it. And there was a description I emailed around earlier from Mr. Halberg and I'll send it printed up for you here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Mr. Halberg, anything you'd like to add before we get into this?
Mr. John Halberg, Piermont District. Just wanted to apologize certainly for last time, a little debacle. The Dulcimer Museum is works progressively fine. Lots of decisions are happening to be made right now, so just in terms of where we're going, it's certainly time to do this. So both to increase the exposure to folks at the Dulcimer Museum and also to help with the viability of the business, I live to produce exactly there, something I've done professionally before. So it's one of those things where you know, I think you just need something good to drink it, I had a show, number one. But in terms of the way I'd like to have this set up, there's actually a cidery in Warren County, I believe it is, that instead it's called Wadupare. And they've set up basically a cidery back in the hills or back in a production spot like I love to do. And then they have a remote tasting house in Warren. So, you know, the way I like to do it is de facto setting it up the same type way like that. In other words, having my production spot, which is done, which is by right over at the Elmers production spot, which is the old cidery is. He didn't actually go hard cider, and we're going to do sweet cider as well as hard cider, but we'd like to produce sweet cider, hard cider over at Elmers. And then ABC will allow me to transfer in bond over to SD's Milk where I will have, you know, the application today is for really a in-name only winery. The ABC will allow me to produce, say, five gallons of cider and then transfer the cider that I produce over to Elmers in bond over to SD's Milk. And that would be the place where it would be dispensed and I wouldn't have any tasting spot or anything over at the Elmers spot, SD's production spot. So I did just get approval from the Water Authority today. They're fine with my plan. I guess you guys know it's kind of a unique situation with that property, pedestrian zone, it's there's a well there, but there's not a drain to it, it's on city water. So, let's see. Really just asking to do cider in what was at one point cider alley. And I talked to an old timer and he said in between St. Massey's Corner and the park, there was something like forty cider stands. So of course SD's Milk is right in the heart of that. So I'd like to do something that was, you know, tier two four, one of the strengths of our county, you know? And I think it kind of falls along with the comprehensive plan of the county, in other words, agricultural related and tourism related. Of course, certainly I'd like to have people from the county be there as well. But I think this is just a good foot in the door to get people onto the Dulcimer Museum. I think the Dulcimer certainly has its debut teens, you know, people that are into it, but I'd like to increase that, you know? So thank you for considering my application and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. So just to remind everybody, this is a preliminary review, so we don't have any public hearing this evening. And I believe this issue, that this application is also in your district, your lucky first night on the job. So I would again offer to have you open us or that clean offensive word.
I don't know that there's much that can be needed on this group, as far as I can tell. Yes, I'd love to hear what others have to say first and, oh, if there's anything left.
Mr. Kohler.
Please, Sean. Mr. Halberg, I'm a little confused here. It looks like you're asking for a class, what was it, one A winery?
Yes.
In a rural village RV zone?
The Elmers spot is a rural residential and I believe the SD's Milk spot is village residential. So with permitted rights, I guess, to do the wineries over at the Elmers spot, but I'm going to be coming forward to you guys to get the special exception to do the in-name only winery or transfer over at the SD's Milk spot.
So what you really want is a off-site tasting room?
What I would really like to do, if the ordinance would allow it, would be to just have the one production spot over at Elmers and then just have a remote tasting house at SD's Milk. But the ordinance is not set up like that and I can do, it looks like a winery at SD's Milk, but I can't do a remote tasting house at SD's Milk. So basically the ABC is saying, you can produce five gallons here and then call that, you can transfer from one winery to the other and then call that your tasting house for the second one, for the wine line.
I guess the concern I have is that as a winery, whether it's technically a winery or not, it opens up other, it was more of an agricultural use, which by right gives you quite a lot of leeway in what can be done there and that type of thing. I'm not sure if that, in this zone, that still applies or whether it does not apply. I'll defer to Ms. Summers on that. The, is the agricultural, and I believe I've asked about this before, but you could, does he have the right to do whatever can be done on an agricultural site for the winery?
He has the right to do the winery only.
Winery only.
And of course, the winery has a tasting house.
Well, I realize it's a tasting house, yeah, all right. I'm just, I guess, you know, if you have a winery, you're going to have bands, you're going to have weddings, you're going to have all kinds of things going on that would be in that area, probably would not be ideal for the neighbors and.
Right. I have talked to the neighbors and they're okay with the plan as it is. I think I stipulated that I was wanting to use a couple of things that would even be considered outdoors per year. I mean, basically it's an indoor venue, you know, in terms of music. It does have a porch, I can imagine taking on the porch, but I can't imagine right now these sort of large outdoor events. You know, I probably will rent the building for its inside, you know, for meetings, whatever you want to call it. But that's not really the vibe, you know, I don't really want to have a futters. You know, I might ask for it to do one time a year, something like Rappahann Music Festival, but I might be in concert with Glass Video, but that'd be something I'd probably come forward to.
I guess I would just want to, I would want to feel satisfied that there's, that you would have to come to us for that. And there wouldn't be any spillover into the activities that are normally prevented in agricultural zones. I'm not quite sure how to ensure that, but that would be my main concern. I think you've done a beautiful job of developing your work, you've done an incredible job. And I think it's going to be a fun thing. I think it's a great tourist attraction and an asset to the county. So I support you. I just want to make sure that it doesn't go somewhere where it shouldn't. And I don't think that's your intention.
It's not.
I just need to, I need to know that, you know? Okay. That's all I have right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, Michelle, when does it cross over, what's the trigger for the act tourism where the state basically takes precedent over the county regulations in terms of events about winery?
The state code has specific legislation for farm wineries and exemptions that do take precedence over county code.
So will this be one here and then two?
It depends on what type of activity would take place there. Anything that state code would exempt farm wineries from, once he has a permit for a farm winery, he would be exempt.
He could do it. Okay. So I believe the category one says that fifty-one percent of the fruit has to be produced on premises. The key word is on premises.
I think it's on premises or leased. So we have planted a hundred twenty-five trees at SD's Milk, but this year I am leasing the hollows over in the middle, about two hundred trees. So my thought was, with those two hundred trees that are producing right now, since it's twenty-some year old orchard, that all of those could be then leveled in terms of my authority to buy other creative houses. So that's about forty-nine percent theoretically. That's the way.
Is the word leased in the category one?
No, sir.
I don't know.
At least fifty-one percent of the fruit or other agricultural products used for grown on premises. On premises means the fruit or other agricultural products are grown, raised or harvested or collected on the same parcel of land where the wine is produced or on a contiguous parcel under the same ownership. That's our county code, which may be different from the ABC regulations.
Okay.
All right.
So I think we hit a dead-on roadblock right there.
What would the ABC regulations then perceive?
No.
And if you got a hundred twenty-five trees, I guess, if you've got production, you'd be applying that production starts.
Yeah, I think there was a thing where Camp Michelle waived that for the first couple of years until production happens with those trees. I don't remember reading something about that.
I think that's intended for the situation of drought after some period of operation. The thought is, it wasn't going to make you shut down and not be able to produce cider just because it was a ban.
Okay. I thought it was for startup as well, but maybe that's.
I didn't see that. I saw the one about droughts. But again, I think part of the challenge that we're all, I know I dealt with is, you know, you have the category one category in our county code and you have category A in the ABC state law, so they're kind of more or less aligned, not necessarily.
You're right, right.
They seem like they were kind of tied in my eye, so it does make this conversation a little tedious. Mr. Henry, where do you finish?
You know, I think you've got a wonderful property there. I'm so happy to see that you're restoring it and doing something with it. And you have good visibility there from Route two eleven. And, you know, I think once you start any activity there, it's going to grow, whether it's a cider field or a museum. And I think you're going to have great success in it. And I think you're going to have great success to the point where you are, instead of trying to do this permit, maybe you should go for a commercial zoning and with a little bit of a site plan and with some proffers on, you know, limiting, you know, outdoor activities and things like this. So that when you go down the road in the future, you've got a lot more that you can represent. And if you ever sell the property, you're going to be marketing to a wider group of people that sees something other than a museum and a cider place there.
Well, you know, on some level, this is a bucket list thing that's setting it up for the rest of my life, so I'd like to be involved with it for twenty years-ish, but not saying that I'll be around that long, but you know.
Yeah, so we got this issue here, we hit head-on. We got this, I think if we moved ahead, you mentioned a number of parking places here and I think it's, it's a use of the property to the point where a plant plane and the right-of-way to the property that goes up to you to the other industrial land, and it's industrial still up there, upholding you, that you would have to do a site plan on the order of what Mr. Clark did for out here that we just talked about, not with the water issue, to put a children park in the buildings and things like this. I don't know, it's challenging to get past the fifty-one percent.
Did you guys get the pictures of the parking area this time?
Well, you've got pictures and then we had a very nice drawing too, that, a freehand drawing that, you know, it's kind of, it's good, but I don't think it's sufficient to go with what one would describe. You got a good use, I mean, you're doing good things, I think the property can get more uses. I think that you really have a commercial zoning here.
Okay, you mean to basically change the design to fit what I'm doing?
You could fit what you're doing with some proffers probably in a site plan and give you more uses if you no longer find it reasonable to do a winery cider in there or a museum. Not everybody's in a wine museum when you get down there, you know, get close to retirement or whatever that is. I don't, but I think you're hitting the head-on here with this fifty-one percent thing, trying to crush your apples someplace else and constrain here this issue of the fifty-one percent that is almost a restart from again, or at least for three years. That's my opinion.
I guess I picked up on some of that. It seems like the, you know, we discussed the outdoor venue and some of the events and I think that there's, there were some concerns about how we might constrain those and I think now we're asking for a small step that would take us to a place that would remove some of that control with respect to those outdoor events. I think that's what Mr. Henry is getting at. We've talked about this in the context of the overall picture in a rezoning application where you, you know, whenever we discuss this, you have a very. where you, you know, whenever we discuss this, you're, you have a very sensitive, thoughtful vision. But when we have to, when we approve this, we have to recognize what part of that is, or are we bound to, and what part of that is you or somebody else be able to alter if we were to proceed by allowing this. And that, I think, is the concern I have. I guess, I'm a little thrown off by the five-gallon limit and whether, you know, fifty-one percent of five gallons would be a pretty small number.
Now, I think you're misunderstanding that, I guess. All of the production would be over at Elmer's. So, only to be a winery, to be able to transfer it over there, would I be making the five gallons at SDC Mill? So, they're saying, really, you could do two ounces at SDC Mill, so I'm gonna produce something.
Well, I understand, but the, but going back to the concern about the fifty-one percent of the production needs to be...
Well, I guess, could the contiguous property be Elmer's, which is less than a mile away?
If I own it? If you bought everything you put in?
The website's...
Anyway, those were my thoughts, I'm sorry, this issue to you.
Yes, first of all, I would love to say, but how much I love what you're doing with the building. There's always, the old mills in the county are treasures, and to see you restoring that, I mean, there's a lot of history around that, I know, from the African-American school that was up the road. I've read in some of the Rock and Head County books how they would walk down and get the water and carry it back to the school when it was, had, you know, the school has been used. So, there's a wonderful thing that you're doing, and you're making it very beautiful. And I'm so glad you're, as Alfred said, I'm so glad you're doing that. I do think there, it sounds like there may be some issues with the category of a winery that you're doing, but I likewise would hope and encourage that there would be a way to do some of the things you're hoping to do there. I think the idea of cider there is a lovely idea, you know, I'm familiar with the idea, I can cite as well. You know, your concept of marrying those is a neat concept. I'm not, I hear the concerns. And I also wondered, in terms of, as some have kind of touched on, the parking issues, you are right up against the Fort River there, or that's a word. And so, if you do take away, again, speaking of dana vegetated farmers, some of that, you may raise a few issues, but I'm sure that could be, you could find ways to deal with that.
One thing in terms of speaking to that, we were actually gonna do an eighteen-inch stone wall. But that is, my thought would be, it would be a buffer for parking, so in other words, there's no way anybody will ever go in and drink. But also, you know, somewhat of a perimeter there, you know, between the delivery. I guess one of my big concerns is just that, again, we've been working on this hollow orchard all year, with thousands into it, of course, and the hope was that we would like to actually use those apples and process them this year. You know, so, I mean, something that'll log our heads if we are to be able to do this or not. So, I mean, I don't know that, you know, changing the zoning, whatever, it can be done. But actually, one of the reasons that I wanted to do it this way is because Michelle, originally, I think another friend who was knowledgeable, told me that changing the ordinance, that's gonna take a while. So, I don't know.
Well, just to be clear, we're not talking about changing the ordinance, we're talking about applying for a rezoning, which is, you know, akin to what we just discussed with respect to the back property. That's the, that's the path that was, you know, that was the scenario that was discussed earlier. I guess my question goes back to the question about the other property that's not willing to be forced. I'm looking at the code with respect to the farm winery in the R2 designation, and that also requires a special permit. I guess I'm wondering about the status of the other property.
Well, originally, the way I read the, I guess, the ordinance of the code was that it was rural residential and that a farm winery was permitted without any sort of exception in a rural residential. Is that right?
Well, I know, I don't know the other parcel or how it's done. I thought I heard you say that it's R2. If that other property is R2, then at least according to what I'm seeing here, it is RR5?
If it's...
If it's RR5, it's permitted.
Right.
If it's R2, it will be...
Well, R2 residential, Village Residential is where SDC Mill is.
Right.
Rural Residential is where, is where Elmer's is. So, yeah.
RR5, I believe, okay. So, that's the, so there would be nothing...
But that's permitted.
Yes, so there's nothing that you, yeah, it looks like that, if that, I'm not confirming the assumption, but if you're right that it's RR5, then that would be a permit to use, and certainly you could press your apples there. I think the only issue is...
I guess the issue is, is that, you know, I don't really wanna have that place as, you know, I wanna funnel everybody again to SDC Mill. So, I don't really wanna, I don't wanna crush there and then have people serving it. I wanna crush there and then move the ranch cider over to SDC Mill.
I understand, your intentions are pretty clear, and we appreciate that. I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I might cut you off for...
You didn't, but I also read the ordinance that it has to be, you have to do, as I already did, at least fifty-one percent grown and produced on that site.
It's funny, I guess I did, maybe I was reading the ABC versus the county code when I was looking at that, but...
And what's the acreage of that property, if you want mine, refresh mine, of the SDCs?
Uh, it's about five, just about half of them.
Okay, because again, that's another, actually, that five, five is the other threshold that I think is unique to the county, and I don't think that's in the state.
Although, one thing, I guess, Elmer's is about two, and I did ask ABC, and they were fine with that. So, I don't know whether that...
Well, it's, again, this, the requirement I'm talking about is in the county code, which is the, it's in the definition, I believe, of, yeah, I think it's in the definition of the farm winery, just that it needs to be under those five acres, but that sounds like you're not, that doesn't look right. You satisfied that?
So, in terms of changing any zoning, what would be the steps to actually...
Well, I think the, again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bait you down a particular path, but Mr. Henry, since you brought this up, maybe you want to revisit the question of the rezoning application. It's an application process akin to what you request for a special, permanent special exception. I think the one that we did most recently was for one of the properties outside Sperryville, where they're buying a big restaurant. That was the last, that was probably the most recent slight specific rezoning application. One of the summers, do you want to elaborate on the process and contrast it to what we're talking about here?
The process of someone's line of this preliminary hearing, public hearing, you just would be asking for the property to change from one certain classification to another. There could be providers involved, which are completely voluntary.
And the result of that would be that you would then, with the exception of anything that you might offer to give up with respect to a proper, you would then be eligible for all of the by right uses associated with the new zoning classification for the property. I think that's what Mr. Henry's point was.
And I think going down the road, you're gonna probably come up with more ideas and maybe things to do with property.
I can't believe you forward these a couple of months.
Was you thinking about the cider a year ago when we did these?
Yeah, I was.
Can I ask a question, what's your, what is the, you mentioned a home winery brewery. I mean, that's a primitive use, I believe, but what is the difference with a home winery brewery?
Personal consumption.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can't sell.
Well, confounding rubber.
If you went down the road and you decided in addition to doing, your cider tasting as a weekend, you was gonna sell sandwiches, you wouldn't have anything to do with us. You would be zoned for that. You would have to do health park or whatever, but you could do that.
You know, what I thought about that, 'cause I remember talking with Michelle from Med, and her saying, of course, this allows you to do some food. You know, again, with the plate being full, I would probably do prepared stuff. I would probably get some, you know, calabamata, that kind of thing, you know. So, I'm not saying that that's gonna be like that forever, and that it might, may never change, but I don't really see being a culinary destination, even though I am a foodie. But I actually can see maybe doing occasionally, I guess personally, kind of do something, you know. I don't know. That's down the road.
I'm just trying to find a way, this shit now is fifty-one percent, to let you go and not have to come in here in the future if you wanna do some different things. So, if you want to find a way to put the fifty-one percent through the keyhole, that's good. Or not, you know. Wait for three years till the apples go on the trees or something else. It's your decision, it's your decision.
And to rezone commercial, is there anything on that, is that a rezonable area there?
It's a big factor to consider, and I have my map in front of me, I don't think there's... Any adjoining commercial, we put it that way.
Right. What do you guys, industrial?
There is the glassware exports. So, I think the only industrial zone place in the county is the Glass Digo right next to me. So, there's, of course, industry all along there, yeah.
Across the street, I guess. You got the coffee shop down, down one property.
Is there something in there?
Well, you want us, you wanna take, can we give them a month to think about it some more? You're not gonna be pressing...
Well, what does, having the cold storage or Elmer's place does buy some time into the winter in terms of potentially pressing the beginning of next year. So, you know, I don't like to put things off, but it can help get the actual solution to what we need to do, a proper solution.
Well, it gives you a month to talk to Michelle and think about pressing this issue. It's the best, you know, trying to look at something that we can't do tonight.
So, I guess we still need to, or is the action table?
June, June district.
So, just, so I... I agree, so I would make a motion to table this application and give the applicant time to look into some of the issues more carefully and willing to entertain it in the future.
And would that be an indefinite pending additional input from the applicant? Is that the, is that the idea?
Thirty days, you'll know where you're going.
All right, so we want to table it for the next meeting, and we'll see where we are.
Yeah, I'd agree to that, table it for the next meeting, the motion's table to the next meeting, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion before is sticking out by saying aye, aye or nay. I believe that is unanimous, thank you very much. Oh, she is. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary review of the specialty permit nineteen oh six oh one, Army Man of Bed and Breakfast. LLC, this addresses the expansion of Bed and Breakfast from three as currently allowed and in practice to five. This summer's could add to that introduction.
Army Man of B and B, LLC has applied for additional bedrooms to be through for the current Bed and Breakfast that was issued by permit thirteen oh nine oh one. The property is located at sixty-five Clark Lane, tax map number twenty-eight fifty-two F. The property is owned by a cultural and twenty-nine point three acres in size. I will note that the BCA is currently reviewing their application. They did report the application here in August twenty-sixth. That matter was put on the table until their August twenty-eighth regular meeting.
Thank you.
And the applicants are present.
Sure. And I'll turn to the applicants, but I do think we're gonna talk about the BCA situation in a minute. I can back that, but yeah, and for here, if you'd like to say anything in addition to what's before, send your application.
Little history? We purchased the property in October of two thousand seventeen. Before that, I came into the zoning office and asked the question, are we ready for five bedrooms? And I got a nudge, not get anything in writing, which was my fault. But I did, we did go through the previous approval that was presented by the, by the BCA, and it had two elements that needed to be completed. The first one was, the VDOT had to approve the entranceway into two eleven, and turnouts needed to be added to the Clark Lane so that in the event that there was opposing traffic, they could move by each other. VDOT approved it with a letter dated July first, two thousand fourteen. For the last paragraph, they said, based on our site inspections and the aerial photograph, we believe the existing entrance sufficiently meets the criterion of a modern volume of commercial entrance in its present configuration, and no additional construction or if necessary, on the entrance. The second element, which we indicate, at least in our files, shows that October two thousand fourteen, which is a year after the October two thousand thirteen BCA grant, was not done in time to meet that twelve-month interval. And Randy started to appeal that decision and decided not to, and thus we're back. We are now leasing and we did get a cease and desist order from Michelle. We went down and said, what's going on, Michelle? And she said, here you've only got three rather than five. After a long conversation and lots of trading of information, we've done, and I both conferred together, stored three rooms, and from that date forward, we've only been renting three rooms. Period, end of discussion. I can document that in any way you see in your packet. You will see what our back room shows in terms of blocking rooms. We marked them as sold, public sees it as sold, so that if you happen to be scrolling around our website and seeing that we have sold five rooms, we've only sold three, but we've marked the other two as being sold to the public, it looks like it's sold out, but there's only three rooms that have been leased. And I can document that consistently over the last three or four months since this all began. Now, we're here to make right of what was a goof on Randy's part, maybe, on the county's part, maybe, on somebody's part, but we're trying to rectify that. If you'll see here, in terms of the site plan itself, if you could find that, Michelle.
Sure.
We have spent a considerable amount of money to include this access point, Clark Lane. And let me, let me do one other thing here. The highway department has a definition, the highway department has a very specific definition of a moderate volume of commercial entrance. It's in their VDOT appendix F access management design standards for entrances and intersections on page F four. And let me read this, because coming from Route 211, "Commercial entrance along highways with shoulders with certain site and design criteria reduced." I don't know what that means. "Site requirements are: maximum highway vehicles per day, five thousand; maximum entry vehicles per day, two hundred." That's entrance, what about the exits? I would imagine you could double that. "Maximum entrance per cent truck trips..." "Maximum entrance percent truck trips of vehicles per day is 10%." So 200 vehicle entrances a day is the highway department standard for that particular entrance on Clark Lane. We have put in, in addition to the every 300 yard, 300 feet or so, the existing cutouts, we've added a lengthy one here because it just cleaned up the driveway. It just looks nicer. And we mow it and we pay to have it mowed. And the access point is essentially straight all the way up into 65, 65 Clark Lane, which is the access. The economic benefits of moving from three to five bedrooms are pretty significant. In 2019, Skyline Vineyard Inn with the three bedroom approval would generate over $26,000 in tax revenue for the county. Increasing the rental rooms to five, that revenue jumps to $31,600. Skyline Vineyard Inn pays approximately $12,000 a year in property taxes. And we hope to increase that up to higher than, to $31,600. We contract with caterers to supply breakfast. We contract with before and after to supply breakfast for our customers. And we like that business relationship and they like that business relationship. What I want to emphasize here, and I think this is the most important piece, is that with a five-bedroom house, with a five-bedroom house fully loaded with 14 Catholic children, if I can become humorous there, you would have a direct tax benefit to the county of $12,000. No additional sales tax, nothing else. There would be no indirect economic benefit. And according to Mr. Spack, who's a highway department engineer, not highway department engineer, he's a highway engineer, that house will be generating 347 trips per month, automobile trips. A five-bedroom inn will generate $31,600 in direct tax benefit and an additional $40,000 in an indirect tax benefit. That alone will produce 174 automobile trips a month, about half of the 347. The reason for that difference is we have an occupancy rate. And I use the occupancy rate from PAII, the Professional Association of International Innkeepers, a 43.7% occupancy rate. And that occupancy rate, they articulate, Mr. Spacks states that a unit that is housed in a hotel, in a small unit hotel, will generate 3.47 trips per day. And if you do some quick arithmetic between the 43.7 occupancy rate and our 3.25 automobile trips per day, you'll end up with 174 trips per month on Clark Lane, which is a reduction from a single bed home. And I think that's an important distinction because of the occupancy. If I had five bedrooms full of teenagers, I'd have five automobiles driving out of there several times a day. When our granddaughter lived there, oh my gosh. Doc, did you see those cars coming in and out of there? So in summary, what I'd like to do is emphasize that we're an asset for the county. Don and I have produced, we now have five businesses, four businesses that are generating tax revenue. We have the winery tasting room. We have a wine club, the Dirt Road Wine Club itself. We have the Wineless Chocolate Shop in Little Washington. We are about ready to embark on a Dirt Road Wine Adventures business that will take us on trips all over the world to wine country. And then we have the inn itself. All of these are assets for the county. And I think we are producing some fine economic benefits for other businesses in the county as well as for our customers who come here from Arlington, Alexandria, Washington DC, spend some more money on a daily basis. There we are.
Thank you. We may have additional questions.
Okay.
Mr. Harv, before we proceed, I know there's been some conversation and I'd like to discuss with the other commissioners, the activities of the BCA with respect to this. I do feel that we should, it's a little odd to me that at the same time they're considering revoking the permit, we are considering the expanding permit. And I guess I'm, I was a little bit surprised. And I guess I appreciate if you could give us a little bit more of a summary, if you're able to, as to why that was tabled and where it is going on with respect to that review.
The BCA tabled, you had a member, some of the BCA, like call upon him. It was tabled. They, the BCA had requested additional information from the applicant. I believe it was the book showing how many rooms they had rented. And they gave applicants a month, or the permit holder, I'm sorry, a month to review those records to the BCA and then counseled them to review, let them into the August meeting.
Okay. So the issue was the, was the whether or not they were complying with the three rooms? That's the question. That's why that's, okay.
I would disagree with that.
You disagree with that being their issue or disagree? What would you say is their issue?
My sense of that meaning was that they wanted to adjudicate the entire relevance of the three-bedroom permit. Not whether or not, there was not a single question. And we've got the transcripts, because not a single question asked about, can we document? Can we see your books from March 13th forward? Because we showed it all to them in our, in our presentation. But it seems to me, and I got the question, they're trying to adjudicate the validity of the three-bedroom first place.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, would it be possible to hear from you, Mr. Macalough, since we don't have the benefit of Mr. Byrd's presence this evening as to what the issue was? Since we have a difference of opinion?
We could do that. I guess to me, the question is not really why the BCA is doing what they're doing. It's that the BCA is doing what they're doing. And to me, the question for us is, I mean, if, it's just through this. If we, if we do our business with respect to this application, that recommendation goes to the BCA, does it not?
That's correct.
So I guess that's the.
One recommendation to them, we run afoul of what they're doing. Another recommendation could be parallel to what they're doing.
Right. So, and so they're already engaged in this, in this application. So I feel a certain amount of, you know, like we're in a position of putting ourselves somehow, you know, at odds on the consideration of this application in a way that I, I don't feel particularly comfortable with. I mean, I understand they're looking at it from a different perspective and we're looking at it with respect to planning and zoning. But especially considering that any recommendation we would make would go right to that same body, I feel some compulsion to, to hold off on consideration of that as the application until that matter is resolved. I'm open to other views on that, but I feel like that just sort of administratively is a, it's unprecedented situation from my experience on that communication. I'm curious if you or others have a say about that.
Well, I think, I'll speak. I think we need to, we have to do our business here, BCA does its business over there. I'm not sure that we're really, we're just a recommending body. If, I mean, we can recommend to approve, not approve, or send, go by the page.
Or set for public hearing.
Oh, I'm sure.
Or you can set it this republic.
Well, I mean, again, this is the responsibility of a natural next step would be a public hearing. So one, one response to my concern would be, well, schedule a public hearing. Presumably, the BCA will have that time to act before we would have that, before we would have that hearing. And that would at least offer the, in a sense, the opportunity to have this thing moving forward in some way. Other thoughts?
I don't think it's on the BCA schedule until August.
Correct. That is correct.
So it wouldn't fall back to us, even possibly until September, if I understand the timeline correctly.
That's what I mean. So the time, if we were to schedule a hearing, presumably unless they table it again at that hearing, we will have the benefit of understanding what they've done with it at the August meeting.
I would be up for to defer this matter to the BCA and wait to see what their outcome is before we have a way forward one way or the other. If we revisit it, you know, if we should revisit it, probably, I don't know, if it's in August, we should revisit it this September. If we're to revisit it at all.
Other thoughts?
I'm not clear that, I mean, I'm sure the differences were pinned and maybe I'll stand corrected, but I'm not sure that there's a, a certain correlation between what the BCA is doing and what we're recommending on this necessarily. That would cause us to table or not vote or where we're, whatever we're talking about here.
Well, if we, if we had, if it's technically a public hearing and we were faced with acting on this, I would definitely have concern about acting on it. You know, we might be in a position where we're recommending, you know, one way or another with respect to expansion and they were deciding on revocation. So I, you know, I don't really want to put us in that position in the county. Given that we're only at the stage where the next step would be a public hearing, I do think that mitigates this matter to a certain degree. But that's on the assumption the BCA will resolve the matter at their August meeting, which I guess is far from it. But I guess I'd like to take the suggestion, I forgot who made it now, Mr. Macalough. Are you in a position to clarify anything with respect to the BCA's action on that?
Basically, our action was, and we recessed the public hearing until August. The reason being, number one, is that the use of the building, it was issued as a BCA for three bedrooms. And then they applied for a higher one. Since that time, they have now made the building itself a winery. And they are, the Little Washington, there's, there's two, two separate corporations, LLCs, that are owned by one group. So now the Little Washington Winery is leasing, my understanding, the first two floors of the Skyline Winery as tasting room and in order to handle for-profit events, which were not permitted under the bed and breakfast permit. So it's gotten very confusing. And what we've done now is, number one, because of it becoming a winery, that is increasing the traffic on Clark Lane, which was a consideration under the BND permit. So we have sent a letter to VDOT to reassess that based on the new use. And we've weighed in the results on that letter. And we are also sending a letter to the ABC Board to get a clearer understanding of exactly what they've done or whatever in that the, they're, they're operating under one ABC license, but there's two separate businesses and there is a common property line between the two of them. But the issue is very confusing. And so that's why we, at that point said, you know, we need to have clarification on these items before we can move ahead. And I would, you know, I would think that you all as a board should take that into consideration. And that we, it's a very confusing issue and we're trying to get clarification on this.
Thank you. Yeah, to me, the, I'm not, I'm not, was not at the BCA meeting. It's not clear to me precisely what these matters are. But they all seem like matters that would be relevant to the discussion around possible expansion. So I guess I repeat my sentiment that I would feel much more comfortable addressing this once the BCA was addressing it.
Are you going to put that in form of motion?
I would welcome that in form of motion.
I guess this is Hampton District?
Yes, I believe it is.
I'll put that in a motion that we postpone.
Table.
Considerable table of this until September in order to hopefully have a BCA's resolution of their issues.
One more second.
Any further discussion?
Excuse me. Well, that just choked me up.
I like that for discussion, not a meeting.
I admit that I don't fully understand the interaction there between the BCA and the planning commission. You know what? It sounds like it's a novel question. And so I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, is, is this something the county attorney can advise us on or?
Well, I, I'm not sure that I can give you, I don't know that I can give you the answer you're fully looking for. But again, in the case of these kinds of applications, we're an advisory panel that gives a recommendation to the BCA that, you know, does what they will with that recommendation. We're looking at it from the standpoint of our interpretation, of its compliance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. And so we are kind of a deliberative body that makes a recommendation in that regard. The BCA is the decision-making body. So in a way, this is, you know, this matter, at least some of the matter, some of the issues related to this matter is already beyond us being discussed by the BCA, which is why I have the view that we'd complicate it.
I think what Mr. McLight is really saying is that we might be recommending approval for a fifth bedroom for a property that now has no permit at all. And that is what would be the awkward situation.
And not that, you know, not that it's an administrative issue only, but the, the issues that are, have become part of the conversation with BCA are completely unknown to us. They're not part of the application. We're not able to really take those into consideration in our recommendation. So it seems, again, that contributes to my feeling that it's premature.
Yeah, I, I may have to abstain on this point just because I don't feel like I have enough knowledge to.
Appreciate it. Any other discussion on the motion that's before us in consecutive?
Can we just repeat the motion first?
What do you?
Motion.
Well, it's gonna matter how you've got it documented, so you might as well be the one to try.
Tell what's application until the September meeting, until the BCA's held their meeting and made their decision.
Well, we have a, we have a motion that is before us that has been suggested. I guess I would ask all in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Sounds all yours, staying. All right. Well. I apologize for delaying the process, but I don't know that our dealings with what we've done tonight would have really done anything to advance this agreement. So I think this is. We do have a matter of whole business. I had wondered how much time we would have to spend on the comprehensive plan, given that it's 10 o'clock. I think the matter that would be part of the comprehensive plan is when we have an export reception. I appreciate everybody's efforts. I would just remind everybody who's tracking this that what we're trying to lead up to is a decision to reach a draft that we're comfortable sending to the Berkeley Group that they would then respond to with respect to a letter recommendation that we would discuss in joint work session with the board supervisors before scheduling a potential hearing on the matter. And then there would be another possible hearing based on what the supervisors would decide in the outcome of those hearings. So with respect to any characterization of us, you know, getting close to being at the end of this process, I would say, I'd like to think we're getting close to the end of the beginning of this process. And that would be the point at which it becomes a matter for public hearing and gets beyond this seven-member commission. So with that, I will just say that I feel a lookout for another request for a work session. I'm gonna look at, I have some potential issues next Wednesday. I'm, I'm gonna be uptown from the 30th to the. I'm, I'm gonna be out of town from the 30th to the 10th, so are my options for having another work session at one point at this time. I suspect others may have some, some travel plans. It is that season. But I will coordinate with Michelle and unless someone has a, must propose otherwise, I, well, I suggest we have another work session soon as we can conveniently convene. Any other thoughts on that?
I have to go.
And then we still have our list of zoning ordinance amendments that we are trying to get to.
One most.
I'm sorry, sorry. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.